Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. We are going to take another minute or so to get started. We have Supervisor Simon, who is having some technical difficulties and should be in momentarily. If you could please be patient with us. And Jake, if we can get Supervisor Simon over into the panelists, then we should be ready to go. Perfect.
Thank you, Chair Sabatier.
Yeah, not a problem at all. Rather wait than start without you. All right, it looks like everybody is here, and I think I've gotten a thumbs up already from all our tech teams to say that we're live on all of our streaming devices or platforms. So let's go ahead and get started. Seem to have lost my agenda here. But today is April 20th. It is 9:03 a.m. And does anybody have a moment of silence that they wish to offer? And seeing none, I know that we have had some hardships here in our community between house fires and car accidents. Unfortunately, as we get away from one of our unfortunate pandemic crises that took up a lot of our bandwidth, we are now going back to some of the other issues that we've dealt with daily in the past. And just want to put those people in our thoughts and our prayers as they deal with the struggles of losing loved ones or losing some of their lives. Supervisor Crandall, would you like to lead us in the pledge allegiance?
For even again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Supervisor. We are on to item number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Is there any extra items that has come up since the posting of the agenda? And hearing none, let's go ahead and move on to item number five, our consent agenda. We have, how many items today? Is it 16? 15 items. Is there any items that the board wishes to pull, staff wishes to pull? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and ask the public. Anybody in the boardroom wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? And if you are in the Zoom room with us, please go ahead and raise your hand. Or if you're on your phone, dial star nine so that we can go ahead and call on you for any items you wish to pull from the consent agenda. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring that back for action at the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.15.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Crandall and a second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on to our 9:05 a.m. item, public input. This is for any public input that does not, is not related to any agenda items on our agenda currently. So if anybody wishes to make a comment or statement from the public looking at the boardroom, if there's anybody here who wishes to make a public comment, again, not related to an agenda item, and in the Zoom room, click the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand or dial star nine if you are on the phone. Okay, looks like we have no public comment. Let's go ahead and close that down and open up item 6.2. This will be a public hearing continued from April 13th, 2021. Discussion and consideration of use permit extension, file number UPX 21-01 and CE 21-01 extends use permit 18-01 located at 9475 Mojave Trail, Kelseyville, APN number 009004-21. And I do want to remind both the public and the board that today we are discussing the extension and not the project itself per se. And so let's go ahead and open it up to Director DeLeon.
Thank you and good morning, Board. Yes, this is an extension from last week. We brought this item to you thinking that, you know, the extension, the reasons that the applicant gave were sufficient to recommend approval of the extension. Some additional information that I'd just like to share that has occurred since last week. The applicant has submitted a set of plans. We received those electronically yesterday. They, staff has made a brief review of those plans. And once, once they're deemed complete, they are looking, we're about three weeks out on the issuance of any building permits. There's some information that's not included in the plans that we're going to need to see. So I would not consider their submittal yesterday to be complete. But I did want to alert the board that we had received a set of plans for the construction of the monopole. There were some, some emails and some, some information sent around during the week about code enforcement and vegetation removal. And I wanted to clarify that 2019, there was a complaint regarding vegetation and specifically tall grass. The, that came late in the season and, and of course, as wintertime came, the grasses all died off and so it kind of self-abated itself. With the adoption of the zones of benefit, we have worked closely with the homeowners' associations for identification of hazardous properties. And this property has, has not been submitted to us through any of that process. So it's not on our list for abatement because we, well frankly, we were working with the homeowners' association and the property wasn't identified. That's about what I have to offer with, with respect to additional information since last Tuesday. And I know Eric Porter's on, on the meeting and will be happy to try to answer any specific questions related to our role, CDD's role in the processing of the extension.
Thank you very much, Director DeLeon. Ms. Grant, wondering if I can call on you next. We had asked about some of the legal, some better legal understanding of what the spectrum of decision the board has today. Wondering if you can elaborate on some of the details.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to the Lake County zoning ordinance, this extension is permissive on the part of the board. It says your board may grant the extension. There's really no, as far as the extension itself is concerned, there's no particular showing that a permit has to make. The obligation of the permit is simply to request the extension before the expiration of the permit, which had occurred here. I can tell you that the case law in regard to these types of statutes and ordinance, statutes and ordinances that impose an automatic expiration date on a use permit, do so according to the courts because it's necessary to ensure that people in bad faith don't essentially hoard property for some future use. In other words, they obtain a use permit but don't have any intention of acting on it until some point far in the future, if at all. And in the meantime, that use permit just continues in perpetuity. So the automatic expiration ordinances statutes exist so that the permit is has to, within a particular period of time, take some, some action to evince use. That does not mean that the action has to be compliance with every facet of the permit conditions. It just has to be some, some indication that use pursuant to the point of the use permit has begun and is in process. In this case, again, it's only the extension that you're looking at. And I would recommend that you do so in the context of what the courts have found to be the point of these automatic expiration statutes. The ill, the societal ill that they are attempting to prevent is that of hoarding property for some future use with, again, no intention to act on the use permit. I don't really think that anything else I have here is, is immediately pertinent. I can tell you that, again, under the case law, I had, if there is before the expiration of permit, indications that use has begun, and that can be a number of things, including applying for permits, having site reviews, et cetera. Have those things done, the permit wouldn't be subject to expiration at all, according to prevailing case law. So that's essentially where you are. I'm sorry, I'm kind of operating in the shadows. It's actually not my intention. They just follow me. But again, that's, that's the gist of it. This is permissive. It is not a rehash of the permit conditions themselves. That is not before your board. Your board has one singular issue, whether to grant the one-year extension. Now, should the one-year extension, if your board grants it, come and go without any indication of use, then the permit would automatically expire one year from the date the extension's granted.
Thank you very much for that. So let's go ahead and bring it to the board for discussion. Any comments from board members? Supervisor Pisca.
Well, I appreciate that they've submitted their plans and they're moving ahead with the project. And so I'm in support of granting the extension.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, I know that last week I did mention that because of the caveat of substantial progress, I, I will just be honest, it's slightly frustrating to have excuses last week based on fires and COVID. And then hearing the words of, "We will be designing, we will be doing." These were all future tense terms. I even repeated those in public. And within a week, these have been submitted. So in my opinion, the effort was not very amazing during the past two years. If in one week, we can get that submitted and handed in. And so feeling a little conflicted on that, but at the same time, I'm a little frustrated by it. I feel that we should have a little bit more good faith from the people who will take up some of our bandwidth over at community development, that if you want to do a project, you're going to put your efforts in making the project move forward. And having to wait two years and then finally coming to the board and which, again, takes up bandwidth to ask for an extension when in a week, when now we're seeing progress. I don't know, there's just a part of that that bothers me that we need to, we need to be more respectful to our staff from a developer perspective, from a board perspective and things like that. So that, those are my current feelings. I'd love to hear from the public and also if any other board members has a comment before we open it up. All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. I believe we have some here in our boardroom today, so we'll start in the boardroom. If you are in the Zoom room, go ahead and raise your hand by clicking the button at the bottom of your screen or dialing star nine, and we will get to you once we're done here in the boardroom. And again, we will all have three minutes. Let's go. And please give us your name.
Aurelia Johnson. I just want to say, in regards to the association, the property that is in the middle, surrounded by all these residential houses, is not owned by the association. So every time we complain to the association about him not cleaning up his area, his property, they tell us to contact the owner to ask him. People have to write him letters and stuff. And my property in 28 years has never been cleaned out on that side, so. And then also, I wanted to say to Ms. Pisca, Mrs. Pisca, that, you know, I know the schools may not have service in one area or the other area, but in the older days, we had landlines and people communicated that way. I mean, I don't think cell phones, even if there was a fire in a tower, there would be no service for anybody. I mean, landlines and sirens are, to me, is something that's been going, that's been from the past in many, many, many years. And I mean, someday, if we don't have a cellphone, I mean, what are we going to use? There has to be other ways of communication. It can't just be based on cell phones because we didn't have cell phones in the past.
And, and I don't mean to be rude and I don't want to take up any of your time, but let's focus on extension or not extension. The fire issue was part of the use permit conversation and is no longer a part of this conversation. This is, this is simply extension or no extension.
Okay, well, I, I think that they've had two years and we've sat around waiting and waiting and it's just kind of like a dropping the ball sort of deal. Anyways, that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Next. If you can wait one second, sir, we have to do a quick cleanup service. Sam, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sam.
Your turn.
Hello, my name's Sean Flynn. I've lived and worked for Lake County for the last 20 years. And this is part of the extension process. This pertains to it. Mr. Gubiers, Mr. Gubiers, the property's representatives. This is typical of what we've, what, what has happened over the last six years of his ownership. The complete irresponsibility of this land owner to supervise and contain his property, his rentals, the, excuse me, I'm not used to speaking up here. But we've had marijuana grows, we've had shootings, we've had death by hanging. This is, it has been six years of living hell, literally, with this man. He keeps procrastinating, procrastinating, and procrastinating. That's what he does. I know I can't speak to all of the ills and, and reactions and how our future is going to be determined by this man's actions. But the mere fact that he's procrastinating has to show the board of supervisors that there's something wrong with this guy. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Let's, Sam, thank you.
Sam was hoping for an empty chamber today. So Don Green, I was here last week. So I just want to point out that I agree with the points we heard this morning, that it's amazing, two years have gone by with nothing. And all of a sudden, in one week, we're able to present plans and, and make progress due to objections over the extension of the hearing. So I think that really points to the, the driving factor of this company. And then another thing I would like to voice an opinion over is the fact that in the application, it stated that no generator was planned at this time. Therefore, there was no need for any fire protection mitigation. But now that it's mandated, there is backup power for cell towers, why does that not constitute a change to the original application?
And because we're only discussing the extension, that would be dealt with, with CDD and the developer. I can open that up for Director DeLeon to respond to, but I'm sure that would be something that would be handled internally. This is simply about the extension or not.
Okay, well, then I would just like to point out again that it's amazing in one week's time that we're able to be presented with plans where two years have gone by with, with absolutely no, no activity. And I think it should be denied based on that premise. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber have a comment?
Good morning, my name is Greg Garazi. I'm representing. Good morning, my name is Greg Garazi. I'm representing the applicant Horizon Tower. I appreciate your time and efforts and working with staff. We have been working during these last two years to develop the project. However, you have to understand that Horizon Tower is the site developer. The tenants will be carriers such as Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile. And the carriers have been quite busy dealing with rebuilding their networks after fires, dealing with COVID. So we had, had a little bit of a slowdown in working with our anchor tenants. We are moving forward with plans. What we submitted to the county this week are preliminary plans. It's certainly not a full submittal set. And there is more work to be done on that, that we'd like to have the extension and the time to do that. Is there any other questions I can answer?
And it does not, wait, we do have Supervisor Pisca.
So thank you for coming to the meeting this morning. When do you anticipate this tower to be up and running with your tenants in place?
Well, we would hope to be able to file the permit in the near term. We do have to do some geotechnical soils studies and foundation designs. That's going to take a little bit of time. And then ordering equipment and deploying a construction crew. I would say a timeline is six to eight months.
Okay.
And regarding the generator, the permit that's before you is just to develop the infrastructure for the site. When an anchor tenant comes, such as a Verizon, they're going to have to go get a building permit and that's when the conditions for the generator and the fire setbacks will be locked in.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like there's no other questions from the board at this moment in time. All right.
Thank you.
We have one hand up in the Zoom room. Jake, if we can unmute phone 6205. And then once you're unmuted, if you can please provide your first and last name.
Good morning. I'd like to thank you, Supervisor Sabatier, for your comments. And I'd like to echo them. Two years has passed and there has not been conscientious activity to move this forward. This is a very high fire danger area where there are 4,000 homes. And this particular site is right at the base of Mount Conocdi on one side, the 4,000 homes on the other side. This is a very strong wind area last night, the winds.
If we can try and stay on the extension and not the particulars of the use permit, because the location of the activity is not what is in question today.
And we need her name for the record.
And if you could provide your name too. And I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. My name is Bart Levinson. And there is an area resident that has a suitable, possible alternative site ready to recommend.
And that is, that is not part of this discussion today. Again, it is only an extension or not an extension. There, there is no further conversation to be had. The use permit is set. It is whether or not it will be extended or not. And I'm sorry, but we, we need to stay on task in this conversation.
Then I just simply want to echo your point.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And I'm just going to make a final call. Oh, it looks like a hand popped up. We have Martha Minzer. If we can please get her unmuted.
I'm not sure, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, hi. And again, Bruno, I'm not sure if this has to do with the extension or not. I, I guess my only comment has to do that with that is if we do not extend, and this is a question, does that mean that that tower would not, would not go in in the future? We'd have to extend to make that happen? That, that's kind of a question I have.
And I think I would prefer Director DeLeon to respond. What would the process be? Is it just starting over from scratch if there's no extension? Resubmitting the use permit? Wondering if you can answer that.
Well, yes, if it, if this permit expires, then, then yeah, the process would be, they would need to submit an application and we'd go back through the process. Obviously, perhaps a little quicker in that number of the studies and different things that they needed to do for the first application. We could, we could just have those revalidated, but it would need to go back through the entire process.
Okay, and that would, I presume, extend the timeframe in terms of when this would be up and running? Most likely?
Most likely, yes, since there would have to be a restart rather than just a continuance.
Okay, I, I'm living in the area and I can certainly understand the concerns. I live inside of Mount Conocdi and in the, what is now, I guess, called the Kelseyville Riviera. But it, it seems to me that when you look at the county and our area, anything that enhances communication, not just for emergency situations, which I'm very concerned about when it comes to the fires, as everybody is. But I think, and, and again, if I'm off, if I'm off target, let me know. But I think anything enhances the ability for our, our small businesses, for instance, in the Kelseyville area, to be able to sell online or also to attract people into the county who are looking for a place where they can, you know, work from home in a more sophisticated internet situation.
Let's, let's make sure to stay on the extension.
Yeah, I was just thinking that anything that pushes, if the extension pushes the timeframe for us to be able to enhance, you know, communication, you know, the internet and how fast and we can do it, it would seem is that would, would weigh against not having the extension. But I mean, if it's going to go ahead anyway, you know, I guess that's, that's another issue. So, does that make any sense at all? I'm sitting here this morning with my coffee. I guess that's my comment. I guess it just seems to me that moving the county ahead in terms of, as quickly as possible, in terms of communication sophistication, is a good thing for the economy, and it's a good thing for emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you. And any, the final call for hands on this item? Again, click the button at the bottom of your screen, or dial star nine. And hold on, I'm coming back to the chamber. I'm trying to do two rooms at once, but I will get back to you. And, okay, I will go ahead and go back to our boardroom. And since you've already spoken, try to be succinct, if you could, please, but please come back. I want to make sure you're heard.
Thanks, Don Green, again. So, in response to the last comments, I'd like to point out that the opposition to the extension and all for the tower is not like we're saying we don't want to improve it or anything, communications. But, you know, it's got to be fair for all concerned here, and the obvious practices of Horizon here, that they can produce some preliminary makeshift plans in a week when they've had two years. And there could be new places, sites that could be explored as to a better placement for the cell tower. I think that the thing, the application should still be denied and revisited as to a more suitable spot for all concerned.
And, okay.
That's it.
All right. Looks like we got another hand that popped up. Since I reopened for the chamber, phone 6205, please, again, be succinct. And please, again, stay on the extension. I know it's difficult for everybody. Phone 6205, you should be able to unmute now. Your hand is up. All right, looks like you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier said that in two years, no alternative site had been explored, and I'd like to repeat-
No, I need to stop you. This is about the extension of the permit. The idea of where the site is and what the project plans were were part of the use permit process, which has been approved by both the Planning Commission and by the Board of Supervisors. And now, we are simply talking about an appeal. We cannot have a discussion about anything else about the project other than, will it be canceled and expire? Or will it continue for another year? That is the only extent of the conversation we can have today. No talks about other sites or anything like that. That was part of the use permit process.
Again, I can only echo your comments, Supervisor Sabatier, that this company has not demonstrated good faith and isn't being a good faith player for Lake County.
Thank you very much. And I apologize for cutting people short, but we have to stay within a boundary. Looks like we have no more hands up, so let's go ahead and close down public comment and bring it back to the board for further deliberation and action. Supervisor Pyska.
So I don't believe we have any grounds to deny this extension because, although it's disappointing, they waited two years or this amount of time to submit plans. They have submitted plans. And so, that is an act of good faith, even though it's down to the wire. So, I don't see how we could deny this. I, just as a point of clarification, that Director Deleon may be able to help with us. And it's a little bit off-topic, but it does relate to some of the comments. The property is technically not within the HOA, but I do believe it is within the zone of benefit. Is that correct, Director Deleon?
You know, I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that question. I'd need to look at the map of the zone. My initial thought is, if, well, I'd need to check to see the map of the zone. I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that.
And if I may interrupt, and I mean no disrespect Supervisor Pyska, but the extension has nothing to do whether or not it's part of the benefit zone or not.
I don't know what a zone of benefit is.
Well, I just wanted to let the constituents that are concerned about fire know that there is a way to complain formally about properties through code enforcement, if it becomes an issue. You don't have to just contact the property owner. But, again, we don't have any grounds to deny this because plans have been submitted and an effort has been made.
Any other comments from board members? I see Supervisor Simon unmuted. Did you have a comment?
No, you know, I appreciate, you know, all the comments today, even, you know, our discussion as a board, but I'm prepared to make the same motion I made last week to move forward, so when the chair is ready.
Okay. And I see that we have a comment from Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what I stated last week, that initially during the first part of it, I voted no. However, we are at the point where we're asking for an extension. And the reason why is, last time, a lot of the comments have been made about different areas. COVID was here last year. To me, it is a legitimate justification. They gave a timeline of six to eight months. And so, I feel that a one-year extension will be sufficient. And I don't know if this is something I can ask, but if they are not going to finish, then they need to start either now looking for alternative areas, because if this comes back next year, I won't be voting in favor of it.
Okay, thank you for your comments. So, my thought process is that staff took a lot of time to bring this to the Planning Commission, to work with the developers. Staff spent a lot of time to bring this to us as an appeal from the community. And then, the developers sat on nothing for two years. And that bothers me. I want to see our staff have to work for things that are going to get accomplished, not work for things that just hang. There is way too much going on in our community development as far as applications go, to have applications be processed entirely and development stalled. That is not something that I want to support. I want to see developers take action and not just receive a yes and sit on it. However, on the other side, my denying the extension completely wastes staff time by now making them having to start all over on something that's already been approved. And I'm trying to figure out where I stand in that middle, because is it possible to look at a six-month extension? Well, we were just told by the developer that it would take maybe six to eight months. And even that, that's if everything works appropriately and correctly for them to meet their deadline of the extension of the year. So, I'm just, I'm slightly frustrated, but slightly stuck as well, because I would be a hypocrite by saying no extension, which adds more staff time, but yet want to support staff by saying, "We're not bringing you projects that don't go forward, and thank you for all your time you wasted on that process." So, I will continue to think on it until it becomes my moment to vote, but I just wanted to at least put those comments out there, that this is something that I hope that we don't see too many developers doing, because our staff time is very valued. Any further comments or action?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would just like to make a comment. You know, like I said, I appreciated all the public comment that came through in this item. But when it came last week, as the extension, I think you heard my one question, you know, did they meet the timeline for the extension? And have they paid the fees? And both those questions were answered to that point. As a needed, we were all provided the information to understand what the extension meant and the extent of our ability as a board to make those decisions. And at this point, you know, it was pretty simple. They had an extension. I appreciate your comments about development. We do hope that folks come in and develop properties as soon as possible when they get a permit. But ultimately, as Supervisor Crandall said, there was a pandemic. There were other issues that maybe are going on. If you remember, not only a pandemic, but we've had multiple years with multiple fires. So, I don't know exactly why it took them this long. They gave us some reasons. You know, what we need to do, obviously, and like I did last week, is just move through the process. You got the use permit, there's an extension, there are certain requirements that need to be met. And at that point, that's why I made the motion last week, and that's why I'm prepared to make the motion this week.
And if I may, just quickly respond to that. Paying fees, and I forget what the other part that you said was.
I think they had 90 days before the use permit.
Yeah, submitting within the timeline, but it also says, "within which substantial physical construction or use commenced." And that's the part that I get hung up on.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Grant.
That's to prevent the automatic expiration. It's not to justify the extension.
Thank you, Anita.
That's substantial work. That goes to the automatic expiration.
Gotcha. But I thought it also said later on that in the extension, that was part of the-
Within that one year, if granted, then there has to be substantial physical construction or use commenced.
And I would say, don't wait on me. I'm looking for the board either to continue the discussion or take some action.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to, I will make a motion. Does the Board of Supervisors make an intended decision to approve file number UPX 21-01 to grant a one-year extension for major use permit? 18-01 is applied for by Horizon Tower, limited for property located at 9475 Mojave Trail, Kelceville, APN number 00900421.
Mr. Chair? Before the motion goes forward, I'm not quite sure why the staff report indicates an intended decision. There's no intended decision that requires further action. This is just simply your decision. So if Supervisor Simon wouldn't mind just amending the motion to remove, strike the word "intended," that would be care of it.
That will be, yes, I will remove the word "intended."
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Thank you to everyone for your comments, and we will be moving on to item- 7.2, A, consideration of the purchase of communications equipment to be installed at various repeater sites in the amount of $21,502.52. And B, authorize the sheriff or his designee to issue purchase orders to Daniel's Electronics and L3 Harris.
Mr. Chair, I will need to remove myself from this item because my husband works for L3 Harris.
Okay. And I believe last time, we just had to ask you to leave the Zoom room entirely. I don't think we can create a room for you. And then, we'll go ahead and get you back on as soon as we're ready. Thank you. And Sheriff Martin, the floor is yours for this item.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I wasn't at the last board meeting, but I was informed that the issue was pulled because of a possible concern about Supervisor Scott's husband working for the company. I've been informed that that conflict has been researched by County Council and that the conflict will not prevent the board from taking action on this. I hope I'm informed correctly. If not, I would welcome Supervisor Scott's husband to apply for us. We have plenty of openings at the sheriff's office. I'm sure he'd rather not. But this project has to do with a repeater project. We're constantly upgrading. It's part of a series of upgrades and improvements to our various repeater system throughout the county. The funding comes from the Homeland Security Grant Program, which is identified and presented to the board by the Homeland Security Funding Body within the county, which consists of two fire chiefs, the public health officer, the sheriff, and a police chief. The project will help us to improve the radio communications. There continue to be numerous dead spots, for lack of a better word, within the county. And these continued projects seek to alleviate that and improve officer safety and firefighter safety during evacuations. If I'm correct in my assessment about the conflict being resolved-
If we can ask Ms. Grant to speak on that conflict, please?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did raise the issue of Government Code 1090 because that does preclude your board, your entire board, from entering into a contract in which one member of your board may have a financial interest. And under the law, that does include the interest of spouses of the board members. I did speak to Supervisor Scott, who was very clear with the limitations of her spouse's involvement. And under the law, I feel confident that that relationship is a remote interest under 1091 of the Government Code, such that Supervisor Scott's recusal from this item, having stated the basis of the conflict, as she has done now twice, is absolutely sufficient, and the agreement can move forward unimpeded.
Thank you very much. Back to you, Sheriff Martin.
Thank you, she said it way better than I could have ever said it. Thank you, Madam County Council. With that, it would be stat's recommendation that the board approve this contract and purchase of the equipment.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Sheriff Martin from the board? I do have a quick question. Oh, go for it, Supervisor Simon.
Just more of a comment, obviously. Sheriff Martin, obviously, thank you very much. You know, public safety, I know, is always on the front burner for you, and just appreciate each and every one of these little steps that you bring forward and your committee brings forward to make sure that we're keeping the public safe. So, just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Your Honor.
And my question for you, Sheriff Martin, is, who will have access to those towers? Is it just the sheriff? Is it every law enforcement, first responders? Who has the ability to utilize those towers?
The space is typically limited, just by what's available in the vault as far as racks for the repeaters and whatnot. But generally, there's sufficient space for the fire agencies that operate within the county to have space on there. Obviously, OES and law enforcement agencies as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. If there's no further questions, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Our boardroom has emptied, so we only have attendees in the Zoom room. Again, click your raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or dial star nine if you're via phone. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I motion to, A, approve the purchase of the communications equipment to be installed at various repeater sites. And B, authorize the sheriff or his designee to issue purchase orders to Daniel's Electronics and L3 Harris.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott? Oh, wait, she's not here. Okay, Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Okay, and Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Sheriff, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And that will do it for our open sessions. Other than supervisors' weekly calendars, let's go ahead and start with Supervisor Simon, and I will make sure to get Supervisor Scott back here.
Obviously, in the meeting all day today with the Board of Supervisors, and tomorrow, I have a couple things. Ava at our abandoned vehicle abatement program at 1:00 p.m. tomorrow. And also have, later on in the afternoon, the class and comp, the CCR in the afternoon, and starting at 3:00. And then, Thursday, have a couple meeting with constituents. And Friday, I'll be down here in my district, also doing the same thing. And back here on Monday for a meeting with Carol, and then, the board meeting on Tuesday. I did miss on Wednesday. for a meeting with Carol, and then the board meeting on Tuesday. I did miss on Wednesday. I do have a meeting with registered voters and figuring out what time to fit that in, but we'll do there. I would like to also report on our Risk Reduction Authority meeting. We had a Risk Production Authority meeting. It was well-attended yesterday, but I did want to make an announcement. I don't know Jessica. I know we talked about it, but I want to make the announcement today that we are going to be moving our virtual town hall of the Risk Reduction Authority from the 29th to May 6th. We are going to move that for a week. There was a very important meeting happening, you know, in Kelseyville. Probably attendees were sent out, about 8,000 folks. It's about bringing back the fire department over there. And so we, we decided as a Risk Production Authority that we're going to move our meeting to accommodate that, and we will have our meeting on May 6th. We've got all the attendees who signed up said, yes, that's good. But that's one communication, collaboration thing that we decided to do. So I wanted to make that announcement today. And I want to thank everybody and our participants who are going to do that. And I wish the Kelseyville Fire Protection District good luck, because it'll make our one more community safer. So thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor Simon. Let's go ahead and move on to Vice Chair Crandall.
All right. Just wanted to go ahead, and I think today we'll be in here for the remainder of the day. Tomorrow, North Shore Business Association, I have do, I'm doing a presentation for them. RC, RC will commence afterwards at nine, and I'll be able to do that. Worth will be in the evening. And then Thursday, I think we have the AAA Governing Board meeting, area agency on aging. Friday is usually a constituent day with me, and I've been getting a lot of calls, of course, because of, you know, we have a lot of situations where fires in homes in Clear Lake Oaks. There was one in Clear Lake Oaks on Sunday. And so just a quick reminder, you know, around your homes and also your devices in your home. Make sure you have your batteries changed. And I'm pretty sure that that's going to be covered in that meeting on the 6th, like Supervisor Simon stated. But I just want to echo some of that in the defensive space. Monday, I think we will have a CAO meeting that day with me and you. So we'll be able to commence on that, and be back here next Tuesday.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Scott?
Um, yes, tomorrow I have meetings with constituents in the morning, and then I have a meeting for Children Thrive at 1:00. And 3:00, I have a comp meeting. On Thursday, I have a Hope Rising Governing Board meeting at 9:00, and then a Housing Problem Solving Training at 2:00. I have a 3:00 task force meeting. On Friday, I have meets with constituents. And then Saturday, the Children's Drive-Thru Festival in Clear Lake. And then I'm also going to be attending the Riviera Heights Drive-Thru Event, getting ready for fire season. And then Monday, the 26th, Scotts Valley Community Meeting at 5:00 p.m. That'll be via Zoom, and then back here on Tuesday.
Thank you. Supervisor Pyska?
After spending an entire day here with you all today, tomorrow.
Be happy about that. Be happy.
I am. I'm very happy. Tomorrow, I, tomorrow and Thursday, I'm going to be participating in some of the CSAC Legislative Conference. I have some appointments for my kids. Cavern check-in at 6:30 every Wednesday as we prepare for fire season. Thursday morning, again, with the Legislative Conference. There's a CTA Zoom in the evening, Thursday evening, with Rural Arts Initiative. On Friday, I have a Workforce Alliance meeting. I'm going to be visiting Canokdi Resort, having a tour with the management there. And I don't think that one's happening anymore. Saturday, there are events both in the Kelseyville Riviera and Riviera Heights to prepare for fire season. There's also a Strong Women Supporting Strong Women shopping event in downtown Kelseyville, 11. And then Sunday, a meeting with the Pine Summit Pool Association. Monday, the CAO meeting. And a meeting I'm very excited about with Director Ewing is coming up to Cobb to start talks about park development. That's what I've got for the week. And I just would like to follow up with Supervisor Simon's comments about the Risk Reduction Authority yesterday and rescheduling the event. I'm so grateful all of our participants were willing to do that. It's very important for us to be supporting the Kelseyville Fire District as they kind of work through whether or not they're going to be working on a tax initiative for a new station. So that's going to be going over, going out over the next many months. So it's something to engage with if you live in that area. And we had, we're having more and more participation with the Risk Reduction Authority. Yesterday, we had a lot of the water purveyors around the county participate, which is so important as, you know, we're adding, we're trying to address all risks in the county, and now we're facing drought as another risk. So just expanding that conversation to all the stakeholders in the county and all the communities is really important. And if anybody's interested in engaging with that, it's the third Monday of every month at 3:00 p.m. And then we really look forward to seeing you on May 6th at their virtual town hall. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And so for my calendar, did have an LTA meeting. What was exciting about that was we are extending, I forget the date. I know it's going through the month of April, but looking at potentially extending the free rides. I appreciate the fact that they've used their CARES Act funding to allow folks to use our transit system freely during the last portion of our COVID-19 pandemic. And looking to see if we can extend that. We, we've seen an increase of approximately 32% or more of ridership. And overall, certain routes saw a decrease of almost 90%. I think it was an average of about 60% across the board because of COVID. Understandably so. People weren't working. People weren't going to school. And it's an uncomfortable space in trying to social distance when you're inside a bus. But I do appreciate the work that has been done to try to bring things back and to offer things to our community and incentives to start using the transit system again. And they're looking at bringing back all of the routes that were canceled due to the lack of ridership. So that's good news. This week is packed with Legislative Conference from CSAC starting tomorrow. I'm going to have some other meetings happening at the same time. I'm meeting with Code Enforcement, AVA on Wednesday. I have a meeting later on that evening on Trailheads for the National Monument. That's on Wednesday. Eventually, the Legislative Conference ends, and I'll have my CSAC Board Meeting later that afternoon on Thursday, which includes a final call with the state. And looks like Friday is just Legislative Conference. And if I'm here on Saturday, which I believe I am set up to be here, I will be joining the events happening at Red Bud Park. I believe it was Lake Family Resource Center that was organizing that for their, I believe it was Child Abuse Awareness Month that we were doing our proclamation for last week. So I'm going to pass by and be a part of that. And the following week, starting over, getting ready for our 27th meeting, meeting with our CAO. Looks like we're going to have a discussion on PSPS with PG&E as well, and then another CSAC call to get up-to-date COVID information. I do want to say that I have gotten some calls and I have contacted the state. This is something that I will be bringing back for us to discuss on 4/27. But there have been some updates to the guidelines of the blueprint, mainly in offering sections of businesses for vaccinated folks. And I just, I think we need to have a discussion about that, so I'll be bringing that back. And also, it's been hinted on, we are potentially, not potentially, we're definitely going to be facing a drought at this moment unless we get some significant rain, which is unforeseen at this moment, at least of that significance. I believe wholeheartedly in personal responsibility. Look at your property. Look at what safety measures you need to take to protect your home. And also make sure to look around at what your property might do to, what you might do on your property to protect your neighbors' homes. Let's take down the weeds. Let's cut down the low-hanging branches. Let's do our best to protect our community as much as we can. Right now, we are looking to pass the one-foot rumsey over the weekend. We are 1.01-foot rumsey. In my conversations with water districts as well as water resources, there's a potential of two to three feet rumsey evaporating over the course of an entire summer. So please anticipate to start looking at water conservation coming soon. Please anticipate that we, we need to do what, what we can to prevent fires. And right now is that time where we can make that work happen. So appreciate everybody that has been doing that work. I know that it gets a little smoky sometimes with all of the control burns that are happening, but I would much prefer dealing with the control burn and the smoke that comes from that than having to deal with a wildfire that we can't control. So make sure that you do what you can. And that is it for our calendars and reports.
Supervisor, Supervisor, Mr. Chair, I did have, I just wanted to make one quick announcement. I did miss it. You brought up the LTA and the APC meeting. And I just wanted to say today in our meeting that we are currently, for LTA and APC, updating our regional transportation plan and our active transportation plan. And you can find that on lakeapcmysocialpinpoint.com. And I just wanted to spread the word today, because I know we were talking about municipal advisory committees and others. You know, this feedback will give us the opportunity to know what is needed in transportation, both biking, hiking, you know, all those things in transportation needs in Lake County. So once again, it's lakeapcmysocialpinpoint.com. I just wanted to make that announcement today at our meeting.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And that will do it for us for our open public session. Let me read you what we have in our closed session. We have four items. 8.1, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D2E1, one potential case. 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D1, Center for Biological Diversity versus County of Lake Etta. Conference with legal coun, or 8.3, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D1, California Native Plant Society versus County of Lake Etta. 8.4, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B. One, A, interviews of public health officer. B, appointment of public health officer. And those will happen in closed session, and we will make sure and provide, if any action has been taken, make that public as soon as possible. And I believe we're going to take the closed session items right away and then do the 8.4 during our scheduled time?
Yes, the 8.4 does have a scheduled start time, but all items will be done in separate Zoom, not in the one you're in right now.
We're going to do 8.1 for, through 8.3 right away and then take a break in between?
Yes.
Perfect. So we will see all board members in that closed session Zoom. And thank you to everyone that joined us today. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.